I assume they got somebody?
Yeah, I think so.
If I can have your attention, it's five o'clock. I have a couple of board members gonna be coming in in a little while, but we have enough to start, so we're gonna start. So first item up is approval of the agenda, and everyone should have it on their computers in front of them. Anything needs to be changed or added? I know we've had some last-minute changes, but you should have it.
So move second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussions? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we have the agenda. Approval of the minutes, and there's several attached, but I'm sure you've had a chance to look over them. The only people that were absent at any of these are the same ones that are here right now, so we don't have to make a note of that.
Move, approval.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have approved all of the minutes. And so we're moving right along, and that's gonna carry us straight into an action. And the first item up is audit presentation. And I believe that must be, is that Mr. Craig?
That's right.
Welcome.
Thank you. I assume that you guys also have this on your screens as well?
We do.
My name is Lance Craig. I'm a manager with Dixon Hughes Goodman out of Pinehurst office. This is my fifth year working on the audit engagement for Beaufort County schools, so some of you may remember me from last year. I'd like to start out by thanking Tammy Lewis, who's not in attendance today, the Assistant Finance Officer, and Mark Dome for all the support that they provided during this year's audit. As you will see a little bit later on, this year was a little bit challenging due to the conversion of the Link accounting software and also the departure of the Finance Officer prior to the beginning of our audit. Today, we're going to go over the independent auditor's report, discuss a few matters which were required to be communicated to the Board of Education, review current year financial highlights and compare those to the prior year, and then also finally take a look at the results of our compliance audit as well. I should mention before I begin that we have not yet distributed the financial statements to the Board of Education, as we are awaiting local government commission approval on those. Once we receive that approval, we'll distribute both the financial statements and also our report to the Board. So we'll start out here with a discussion of our auditor's opinion. This is an excerpt from the financial statements of our independent auditor's report. It reads that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information for the Board as of and for the year ended June 30, 2016. This is what's known as an unmodified opinion? Come on in. No, no problem. This is what's known as an unmodified opinion, meaning we are not aware of any material modifications which need to be made to the financial statements. As I stated earlier, there are a few matters which are required to be reported to the Board of Education. That will be communicated to you in writing once we do deliver the financial statements to you, but I do want to go over those at this time. Our responsibilities as it relates to the audit are predicated on generally accepted auditing standards and also OMB's Uniform Guidance. GAS dictates how we perform our audit standards and the standards that we must adhere to. The Uniform Guidance governs the compliance audit portion of our work. The financial statements do contain certain significant estimates and also sensitive disclosures. Those were noted to be the useful lives of depreciable assets and also the proportionate share of the net pension liability related to the teachers and state employees' retirement system plan. If there are any difficulties or disagreements with management, we are required to report those to you in writing. There were no difficulties noted during our audit. And we're also required to report certain journal entries which are determined to be material. We did have a few material journal entries as a result of our audit. Those entries were to correct certain accounts payable and accounts receivable items, the net pension liability related to the teachers and state employees' retirement system plan, and also depreciation expense for capital assets. The next several slides are going to be highlights of the current year and comparing those to the prior year so the Board can have an adequate understanding of the movement of their funds in the current year. This is a snapshot of your general fund for the year ended June 30, 2016 and 2015. You can see that cash decreased from $2.1 million down to $1.3 million as a result of expenditures in excess of revenues in the current year. Likewise, your fund balance also decreased from $1.9 million down to $1.1 million as a result of this as well. You can see that revenues in the current year increased $500,000 due to additional appropriations made by the county in the current year, which were spent on both personnel cost and also operational cost as well. This is a summary of your restricted revenues fund. This fund houses certain federal and state grants that are not administered through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. It also has various miscellaneous revenues such as E-rate funds and also Medicaid reimbursements. The cash in this fund is generally going to be assigned in subsequent years for specific purposes and also programs. Your State Public School Fund is a reimbursement-type fund administered through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Because it is a reimbursement-type fund, any allotments in the current year which are unused are required to be reverted back to the state, which is why this fund does not carry a fund balance. The revenues in this fund are generally going to be based on enrollment and adjusted for funding from the state legislature each year. In comparison to the prior years, revenues were relatively consistent. Overall, most of the revenues in the State Public School Fund are spent for instructional purposes. Your Federal Grants Fund is also a reimbursement-type fund administered through NCDPI. These revenues are typically tied to demographic and socioeconomic statistics based on your student population. In the current year, the increase in revenues of approximately 4% were tied to your Title I program and also your special education program. Your Capital Outlay Fund, in comparison to most other LEAs across the state, is actually quite healthy. It appears that the county is providing capital appropriations to meet some Beaufort County schools' capital requirements during the year. You did sustain a decrease in cash in the current year from $1.9 million down to $1.4 million, which again was a result of excess of capital expenditures over revenue in the current year. Some of the major projects in the current year included a multipurpose building at Eastern Elementary and also the fieldhouse at Washington High School. This graph gives you a visual presentation of the sources of your revenues over the past four years. As would be expected, the majority of your revenues are derived from the state of North Carolina, followed by Beaufort County, the U.S. Government. Over the past four years, state of North Carolina funding has increased slightly, as well as the county funding as well. U.S. Government dollars have continued to decrease as a result of the expiration of the Aura funding. And this graph will give you an idea of how those revenues are spent annually. It's not a surprise that the majority of your funding is spent on instructional purposes, approximately 75%. That's followed by support services. Your instructional services are mainly teacher pay and benefits, also classroom materials and supplies. Your support services are primarily general and administrative-type cost. This graph breaks down your fund balance for each of the past four years. I've included both total fund balance for governmental funds and also your unassigned fund balance. Your unassigned fund balance is gonna be the most important aspect to look at because it tells you what is available, should there be some sort of adverse effect to your funding or significant unexpected cost. Over the past four years, unassigned fund balance has steadily dropped, which signifies that Beaufort County Schools is using fund balance to make up for operational shortfalls throughout the year. At June 30, 2016, approximately $739,000 was in your unassigned fund balance, which equates to 5% of your annual general fund expenditures, meaning Beaufort County Schools could operate for a little over half a month if there was a complete cutoff of its funding.
Is there a target that you would recommend?
There's actually not a target for school systems. There are for counties, and I'm sure Willie would know that. They kinda have the same approach for cities as well, but the way school systems operate is very interdependent on the county. So you have some school systems, their relationship with the county. The county will take back all the funding each year that's not spent and leave them with no fund balance. As a general rule, what we typically see is somewhere around 12% of annual general fund expenditures, which would be about a month and a half of operations. And then lastly, this is a snapshot of your school food service fund at June 30, 2016 and 2015. Net position, the increase from $870,000 to $930,000. Typical with most LEAs across the state right now, operating revenues are continuing to decline as participation in the child nutrition program has dropped, most assumed due to the healthy food regulations that have been passed and have been implemented over the past several years. This has forced most child nutrition programs to cut expenses, which were done in the current year to the tune of $91,000. Luckily, some of the non-operating revenues, such as federal and state reimbursements and commodities, have made up for some of the decline in operating revenues, which has taken some of the pressure off of schools to cut operating costs even further. That brings us to the compliance portion of the audit. In connection with government auditing standards, we are required to assess your compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. We do this in our report, which is titled "A Yellow Book Report." In connection with this audit, we did note a few things which we did, which we are required to report to the Board. That being that manual journal entries should have adequate approval and be fully supported through explanations and supporting data. Liability accounts should be reconciled on a monthly basis. We noted that this process was disrupted mainly due to the Link software conversion in the current year. Reconciliation of cash accounts should also be done on a monthly basis, with any discrepancies reconciled and resolved. Again, due to the Link conversion software and the departure of the Finance Officer, these were not done on a timely basis. Expenditures should be recorded in the period in which the services are performed or the goods are received. We noted a few cutoff issues related to accounts payable, which was not handled appropriately in the current year. And then lastly, when undertaking any sort of significant project, such as the Link conversion, there inherently going to be issues with that. We did note the following issues which directly impacted the financial records in the current year. Those were that the board-approved budget did not match what was contained in the Link software in the current year. The beginning trial balance for certain funds did not agree with the ending trial balance in the previous year. And also, the depreciation schedules were not in agreement with the beginning of the year either. All of these items were identified during the audit and have been corrected at this point. We are also required to evaluate the Board's compliance with federal programs that are deemed to be major. There was one major program in the current year, that was a special education program. We noted no findings, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies required to be reported in accordance with the OMB's Uniform Guidance. And then also, we are required to evaluate the Board's compliance with state programs that are determined to be major. That was the State Public School Fund in the current year. Again, we noted no findings, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies required to be reported in accordance with the State's Audit Implementation Act. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Craig? So we're good going forward?
Putting him on the spot.
That's his job.
We took his figures, his adjusted trial balance, we reconciled at the beginning balance, so we know that one's off. Right now, we're going through and we're tweaking the budget as it was originally adopted and make sure it's amended, just to ensure that you all have all the budget amendments. We're going to bring it to you in a lump. I don't know which ones came before you in the past. I'm gonna present it as a whole, so therefore they're in your record.
I guess my question is also to Willie. Are you comfortable, from this point going forward, that we've got a handle on the reconciliations and everything?
Yes, we're working twofold. Ms. Lewis and I have been working on getting the balances in the school-based funds. That was one of the things that Mr. Craig and I had been talking about, making sure that our records match the audit, then match what we told the schools. And right now, we've got a couple of differences there, and we are moving forward to get those bank statements called up, and just how we're going to continue to keep them current.
No. Moving forward, are we?
Yeah, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but that's just the way it happens around here.
Well, it's, yeah.
Was it you, Mr. Craig, that called me for the interview?
It's probably one of my associates.
I don't believe it was you. I believe it was someone else.
We typically like to contact a board member, so if you guys ever get a call from somebody claiming to be Dixon Hughes Goodman, we typically like to contact a board member to ensure that everything that's been represented to us by management is also your stance as well. So if there's anything that's not been disclosed, material fraud, noncompliance with laws and regulations, we need to be made aware of that.
No, I mean, I was just gonna say, because the conversation I had with that particular person, none of this was a surprise. I mean, we covered everything, and they asked those questions you just mentioned then. What did I think about here or there? And I think we're good moving forward. I didn't see anything surprise me too much here.
Good, good. We don't like surprises.
No, not with dollars. I don't like surprises anyway, so. Any other questions? If not, we do not have to formally, I am correct, we do not have to formally approve this.
I believe you accept it. It's the way we always.
Yeah, but we're gonna just take a motion and do it just to put a little final stamp on it. So I'd entertain a motion to accept this.
I move that we accept the audit as presented to us today.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you very much.
I believe that's Mr. Slade I'm looking at?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Eric Slade. I'm here on behalf of the Bath Recreation Department. We're here asking for approval to take two of the existing fields we have and kinda finish the fence around the outfield. We've got fences that run from home plate down the third baseline now, and we've got the funds available to go ahead and finish those up, and we would like to do that. If you're looking, I printed off a picture from Google Earth. The school would be on the west side of these four fields, and the two fields to the further east side would be the two that we're talking about doing.
Yeah, I'd read myself, and I'm sure everybody else has, what's on our screen here. And I don't have any issues with it. Any questions, Mr. Slade, about this?
What's your timeline on this?
As soon as we get approval, as soon as the fence gets in, they're looking to put it in, we would like to do it within the next month.
Okay. They currently have softball going on and baseball, don't they, at the school?
Just getting ready to start. This will affect none of the fields that are playing for the school. The only field is the field in the northeast northwest corner is the school ball field, so it would, all the work would be done over further to the.
So won't have any impact on them?
No, no effect whatsoever.
Won't keep them from practicing?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That was my only question.
Any further question?
I have none. Anyone else?
Thank you for what you're saying.
Thank you.
So entertain a motion.
Move, move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed of this?
We sure appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Have a great evening.
All your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Southside High School, cross-country, Mr. Johnson and Mr. White.
We have a couple of projects that we want to have approved also at Southside. We're, first of all, we're interested in fitness, and we have a sandbox, sand pit, not a sandbox. Sandbox would be for kindergartners. This is for high school kids. There's a, we want to put a sand pit on the football practice field, and that's gonna be used for fitness classes and also for sports to, for dexterity in football and other sports. There's no cost to the Board. The railroad ties have been donated and also the sand. And then on the other side of the school, you look at your map, this is the west side of Southside. In a wooded area, we'd like to put a cross-country trail. We had cross-country for the first time this fall in a long time. We had a student that go to the state meet. We're proud of that. And so we want to host cross-country meets at Southside. We feel like we can get a machine to do a very little invasive trail in the woods and keep all of the mature trees in there. And we also want to use our biology and earth and environmental classes to make this also a walking trail. So it'll be a double thing that we could do for the school. So Sean, you have quite of a miss.
Well, one thing, as far as the cross-country trail, we're trying to make it where the kids will not have to cross the highway. In the past, when we had cross-country before, we were going down the road, I guess just east of Possum Track and 33, the intersection there, it used to be a dirt road, and we'd have people there, you know, obviously directing traffic so cars wouldn't come by. But we wanna, we wanna have this all-inclusive on campus. And by doing this, we could, if we used the wooded area behind the school, behind baseball and softball, and there is some wetlands back there, we would definitely stay away from that. We're only gonna stay on the dry ground. But there's plenty of room back there where we could do, basically, two laps around the school would be the distance we would need for the cross-country course. And as Mr. Johnson said, as, you know, less invasive as possible, we would only be, we're gonna walk the trail or walk the woods here in the next couple of weeks and put some markers up to kinda mark the path and make sure we got the right distance through there. No mature hardwoods or pines would come down. We're trying to make it, you know, as little as possible being cut. We have access to a piece of machinery that can go in and basically cut a path about three to four feet wide, which three feet wide is the minimum distance for a path through the woods for cross-country. Like you said, no money would be involved as far as coming from the county. We'll absorb all that cost for the trail we've got. A teacher at school that thinks he can get a piece of equipment, a hold of a piece of equipment in the community that would do this, and we just pay for the fuel for that machinery. And if that's not available, he has talked to somebody else, and I think it's $75 to $90 an hour. And from what they're saying, just by looking at the area, it would take probably about four hours to do. And that would, you know, we could absorb that either through athletics or the boosters club.
And this teacher's David?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I knew that because you had mentioned, but I knew it had to be David anyway. He knows all about stuff like this.
What's the distance, Sean, of cross-country course?
3.1.
Keeping them off that highway if we didn't do anything.
We wanna actually stay inside the fence, the fenced-in area of the school, the perimeter of the school.
And they'll end up on the track, is that right?
Yeah.
Go through the wooded area and watch, and then end up on the track.
Yeah, we'll start, we'll start, because we gotta have a larger starting point for cross-country, because everybody's gotta start at the same time, and then it narrows down. We'll start on the practice soccer field, which is between softball and football, behind the visitor stands. Go around twice and then come onto the track, do a half lap around the track, and finish at the start-finish line on the actual track.
Will you be then responsible for maintaining this?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And like Mr. Johnson said, we're also trying to incorporate the science classrooms in there, maybe to put some markers out, make it kind of a nature walk also, some markers with, you know, identifying trees, you know, different things along the trail.
Be available for the community. Yeah, so it'll be a nice feature for us to have in the community.
And we already own the land.
Mm-hmm.
And have fun chasing the poison ivy. Many, many years ago, another school had a problem with poison ivy. No matter what they did, it was just growing in abundance, and they really, that was their biggest challenge, was the poison ivy.
We're just excited about identifying as many snakes as we can.
Yeah.
If you get too close to that creek, that may be. But you say you stay away from that area, because it is wet once you get well down into the swamp.
Yeah, if you see on the map there, there is plenty of high ground there. You can actually see where the wet areas are. It's mainly right along the back edge of the property and also on the Possum Track end. There is a little cleared area right there by the bus parking lot that is not, you know, school property, but that's fenced off anyway.
Are you gonna have time to get it up and done before spring?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're trying to do, is go ahead and mark it and possibly get it done before the foliage comes back, before it greens up. We can see a little bit better, you know, where we need to go and be easier to get in and out.
Can we go ahead and?
Sure. And having a path in there, make it easier to get to the softballs, you're not going to.
And the baseballs too.
And the baseballs, because they're all the time to them. They're already going in the woods, aren't they, Sean?
They are.
They're already going in the woods. So this'll give them a path to go in there.
So move, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we approve, and I second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to give our approval. Any last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed of that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Appreciate all the efforts that you guys do. And all the time walking down in there, getting balls out, so. That moves us along to S.W. Snowden, and I believe we have the principal, Mr. Hanyey. Don't believe we do, I know we do.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for this opportunity to request to add into Scholastic Athletic Team. At Snowden, we've been looking for a spring sport for our students since last year, and we kinda toyed with even tennis, because we had these nice courts out there. We had a fun run last year for the first time, a 5K, and there was a great deal of interest in the community and from our students. And we went to our students just recently, and many of them voiced interest. And we have about 30 students that are interested in being part of a track team. What we would like to do is to, we've got enough funding, I believe, for the uniforms. It's a very minimal cost. We do have some funds for that. The facility, we've got, you know, plenty of room behind the school. Our meets would either be in Craven or Pamlico County for the first year, and the equipment we need is fairly minimal and inexpensive, you know, stopwatches, you start a pistol, relay batons, and we've started researching the cost of those. And again, it's very minimal. Mr. Stephen Whitley will be our boys' coach, and Renee Smith would be the coach for the girls. We have a list of students that have voiced interest, there's 16 boys, 13 girls that are attached. We've already contacted Jimmy with EB Sports. We usually work with him on some of our sporting equipment. And again, with the uniforms, very minimal cost, we did a little bit of research, and it should only be about $20 per student. So we've got plenty to cover that at the school level. Any questions?
Personally, if we can add any sport to Snowden, I'm all for it.
Well, I'm just excited that we'll be helping out Southside High School by preparing some of these athletes to participate in cross-country. There's also a lot of local runs, and our kids are very interested in getting into really good shape and participating in the Aurora Fossil Run, and then we've got our own fun run that's coming up in April.
Will you be getting these coaches on our list, or are they already on here?
They're on here.
They're already on here?
Oh, I don't.
I know the coach is here, but I mean, we actually need to get them on the list.
For the personnel.
Right.
I don't think they were on personnel.
No, that, I mean, not until.
We approve one thing at a time.
Yes. Let's go ahead and.
Mr. Chair, if there's nobody else, I make a, and I will second that again, too.
Okay.
I hope you're gonna be able to get it going this year?
Oh, absolutely. We're ready.
I love that you've got that much interest.
Says spring 2017, right on here, so.
That's right. That's right. We're ready going. Dr. Phipps also had another.
That's what you're approving. You're approving it for now.
And Dr. Phipps also had an excellent suggestion. I talked with him earlier too, with, you know, some of the hurdles and some of the things of their schools that are not using their equipment for this season, you know, possibly they may be interested in letting us use them. But again, from the research I've done, the costs are very minimal.
Well, if he brings you any, don't let him demonstrate because apparently he has some issues with.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Thank you very much. Now we can go to step two whenever you find your coach, get your coaches on.
Once we get those contracts signed, we'll bring them to you.
Well, I figure spring's right around the corner. Field trip approvals?
There's several that are on here. I'd like to give them all to you at one time and seek your approval, but I'll go through and share with you what they are. The first one is field trip number ninety-seven thirty-seven, Southside High School, seventeenth of February to the eighteenth, overnight, Science Club, UNC Wilmington. It's a Blue Heron Ocean Bowl and Campus Tour. And you can see there the number of students and chaperones taking a minivan. The next one is ninety-six ninety-one, Northside High School, the twenty-second of March to the twenty-fifth, overnight for the Greensboro FBLA State Competition. You see that information as well. They will be traveling with Washington High School and Washington will have a male chaperone. So when those are put together, that, that matches up in case that was a concern. The next one at Southside, trip ninety-six seventy-eight, on the twenty-sixth of April to the twenty-eighth is overnight, Skills USA, also in Greensboro. And then the ninety-eight forty-one, Southside, the eleventh of May to the fourteenth is overnight and out of state. And this is a similar trip that you've seen before with the band going to Gettysburg to perform at the Gettysburg National Military Park. It's a, it's a, a good trip for them to take and we're excited that's back on there. Ninety-six forty, Northside, the nineteenth through the twentieth of May, overnight, out of state. Senior class, Kings Dominion, to participate in the Senior Fest. And then ninety-five thirty-six, Northside, overnight, the ROTC program on a drill competition in Fayetteville. And then ninety-six thirteen, on the fourteenth of April, just an out-of-state trip. They'll do it there and back with the Poetry Club, going to the Busch Gardens to participate in a scavenger hunt. And we don't have the male chaperone there, but this is not an overnight trip. If that's something you need us to look at, we will. But they'll, they'll be leaving and coming back in the same day. So I'd like to present those for your consideration and approval.
Well, they have two for thirty and the deal's one thirty fifteen, so they're covered. I mean, as far as I'm concerned. Anybody have any questions? If not, okay, good.
I assume the, you said Northside will be traveling with Washington.
With Washington.
I assume that'll come up for approval later for Washington?
It will if we have. I'm not sure if we've got it or not, but when you match those two, the chaperones and students match out. I'll double check that and make sure if I think we've already done that one.
We got a motion and a second. Any last questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed to it? Terry, I didn't know if you wondered what we were saying. When they go off on trips, we have to have at least one chaperone for fifteen students, so.
I knew it was a numbers game.
Typically, it's male to male, but if they're not overnight, I think it's fine, right? It's still two for thirty, so that's one to fifteen, so we're good.
And our policy is anything overnight or out of state requires board approval, so that's why you're seeing this.
And most of the time, they, they end up having more than what they need.
Yeah, I was going to say you might be, be better off if you got more than that one to fifteen, more likely, but that's the rule. Class size reduction resolution, I believe, needs to be presented.
This is a recommended resolution that came from the North Carolina School Board Association. This deals with what I think is an unintended consequence of the General Assembly action this past year where they were doing class size reduction. I think the idea and the intent of that was positive, but the impact is going to be negative with us in terms of space and the number of employees that it may impact. So the School Board Association has asked schools to look at this resolution. And what we're asking our General Assembly to look at is to, to look at how the, the funding and the position allotments are done to try to provide some flexibility and relief to us because of the space concerns that we've got and then also the impact that it may have on our staff members. We know that there's a House Bill thirteen is out that would provide some resolution. It's not perfect, but it's better than where we are. And we're supporting that and hope that we can get that passed and through the Senate. But they ask for the local boards to consider adopting the resolution that just stresses our understanding and our request to them to consider that when they pass law, the law.
Would you do me a quick favor? I, I understand this and I know you're good being put on the spot, so I don't mind doing it to you. Can you give the one-minute explanation why just because we're being asked to reduce classes, that's not a good? Because I understand it. I think the board understands it, but we get a lot of questions, don't we, Don, about why would you be concerned about them reducing your class sizes? Explain why we're talking about that.
And I have to say, class size is something that superintendents for years have been saying the reduction was important. Where it impacts us is when you put the maximum limit in the cap on the number of students that you can have in a class. What it requires us to do, when you do the math, is we have to have more classrooms, which means we have to have those teachers. When the law was passed, there was no funding for those additional teachers. So you have to make that happen through the existing funding that you have through the state or you have to go to the local funders, which will be the county commissioners. And this becomes an unfunded mandate and a pass down to the county commissioners. And it's basically for us, on our projections, would include nine positions. But either the, you know, how you handle that is really up to the locals to make the decision. We could either go to the commissioners and request additional funding for nine positions or we would have to look at trimming some positions to make sure that we met the class size reduction concerns. The other issue is that at two of our schools, at Eastern Elementary and at John Cotton Taylor, we do not have the physical space to add additional teachers in classes. We, we just can't do that. And one recommendation that I heard from someone at the state was to put two teachers in the same classroom and divide the class in half. And if we're doing that, I feel like we'd be better off with teacher assistants who are highly qualified now to do the, the work that they're doing. But we're just asking for flexibility here. Every county is different. Every school is different. The physical needs in the, in the buildings are different and we just want to make sure that we're doing what's right for Beaufort County. We're just asking for that flexibility.
Thank you. Maybe that made it just as clear as mud, everybody. I don't understand it. So, because I was actually thinking that they had, they haven't pushed the bill through the, the new school, so it's still being, being out there.
It hasn't gone through the Senate yet and I'm not sure it's made it completely out of bounds.
I'm in the House Education Committee today.
But that's as far as it's got. So anything we can do to kind of bump it would help.
Okay. Should, should we approach the commissioners about adopting a similar resolution?
And then maybe I'll follow up with them and say, because ultimately, if, if this passes, it's either cut positions or get more money from the commissioners. And I would, I would think they'd have vested interest in that.
And when he means cuts, cut positions, to add classrooms, you may have to cut, I don't even want to say what they are, but you may have to have some of your other classes that are not what I consider, you know, the regular classroom type position. So you, but you, that's a good point, because eventually they may be footing the bill. So they may, they may want to do the same thing.
The more voices that express their concerns.
You just mentioned that to them.
I'll be glad to follow up.
Well, first off, we need a motion to take this one.
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution and send it forward.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any last questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? You'll get it to me tonight. I'll sign it and you can send it on. I bet you got it right in your hand, don't you? Capital update. That brings you up staying. Or Mr. Hudson, put the cameras. How about I do the ceiling quotes first? Let's just get, I saw that. First on my list.
Yes, sir. First one I'm bringing to you tonight is, both of these projects were sent out for RFP and we did not have any replies. And upon y'all's request, I seek individual to do it. And we found a gentleman out of Vatsburg, North Carolina, that is JLG Ceilings. And the Chaco, excuse me, the Snowden project came in at fifty-five hundred dollars and we had a budget allowed of fifty-seven hundred dollars. So I'll be seeking approval to accept that one tonight. The second one is also the same one that was sent out and we didn't have any bids reply. We got a bid here, a quote of eight thousand. Our budget is nine thousand.
So same, I see. Same person's going to do both of them?
Yes, sir. The Snowden job, he said we could get done over the Easter break with no problem. The, and he said he also could do the Chaco Wendy Middle School if we had to. But the issue we'd like to do is replace the water system at Chaco Wendy Middle School before we put the ceiling in because it is very decrepit. Galvanized pipe, and we would like to get in just soon as the kitchen closes after school. The next day is, whenever they allow us in there, when they get their food put up and cleaned up, get in and replace this piping above ceiling.
After school, it's in the break or after school, it's in June?
After school is in June, like the June seventh or eighth, somewhere in there, whenever we, soon as we can get in there and, and cut their water off.
And that's for which school again?
That's for Chaco Wendy Middle School. And this was a health department request that we install this ceiling. Or requirement, excuse me, wasn't a request. It was, they told us we had to.
So the two-by-two vinyl tiles will meet their requirements?
Yes, sir. It's considered a washable ceiling, so.
Right. Putting washable ceiling is what we're saying.
Correct.
Now, in Snowden, you're just, you're just putting in new?
We're going from two-by-fours to two-by-twos. The moisture in the building over the years, the two-by-four tiles just sagged big time and we're going to be adding additional braces and cleaning up and all new tiles, putting that, them two classrooms in the hallway.
I had a question. I want to attack them together or separately. To me, it doesn't really matter as far as that goes. I mean, how big a trouble is it to do the water? I mean, I'm trying to get a handle on CMS.
It's the main water pipe that comes through the existing wall, comes overhead. And we're proposed to put it outside, move our hot water heaters over, which help our demand hot water load, and get rid of the galvanized piping that's in the kitchen and put it all in copper.
Are you talking about in-house?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Our plumber's prepared. We get the materials list together already. And just the fact of doing it in another part, I was going to ask if we could, if we could get some friends helping to play for the copper out of the balance left over from that project would be greatly appreciated, but if not.
How long is it going to take to do that water project?
Um, probably two days, three days.
With the bathroom renovations getting here, it can't be in two places at one time.
Who can?
Our plumber. He's going to be doing the, the bathroom renovation here over the Easter break, so that's why we can't do it over the Easter break. Get in there where they're closed.
Then that's why you need to bid some of these projects out.
We're going that way.
What's the board's pleasure on this?
Is it possible to speed that up, that we could get that plumbing work done by a subcontractor? So that we could get the ceiling tiles done over the Easter break?
It is possible. My biggest worry is when you bring somebody who's going to install a ceiling over all the cooking equipment and everything, the mess that it will make from a, you know, ceiling tile, even though this is not a washable ceiling tile, to clean up is not a burden that I want to put on the cafeteria staff.
When they come back from break. I got you. You'd rather it be when their kitchen's closed for the summer. Do they not operate a summer program at all out of there?
Well, we're hoping we can head it off. We're going to use another kitchen this year, what give us time. Last year, we didn't get in in time to get in Quinn's thing. She had already planned to do summer feeding at Chaco Wendy to cook the food, so.
Have you spoken with her about what her plans are?
Yes.
We've asked for it not to be at Chaco Wendy Middle School this year.
Is she okay with that? I mean, they do it because of the location.
Why don't we just switch, switch the scheduling? Switch the bathroom to June, switch this to the Easter break.
Because he's saying to do the ceiling tiles behind the plumbing.
Then we'd have to require them to come in.
We can have the ceiling tiles done Easter break also, right? That's what you stated.
Yeah, but the mess that we would make would require the kitchen staff to come back in prior to opening school to clean their kitchen and get it back sanitary once we mess it up, per se.
They have to be ready to go.
And in the summer, they come in two weeks before and they get the kitchen prepared.
If it wasn't any kitchen.
Get everything ready to go.
It wouldn't matter how big a mess it made.
Whereas over Easter break, they've got to be ready to serve breakfast.
We're going to clean it up and vacuum everything we can, but them to do their terminal health department cooking and cleaning and getting ready would require them to come in that Friday or weekend, work to get it cleaned up. I don't think it's fair to require them.
On Monday morning.
I, I thought the summer feeding program was going to be done, that the cooking at least was going to be done at Chaco Wendy Middle.
It was done there last year.
And that's, I was thinking something around that. And that's why I'm sitting here just sort of looking off into space because I know there was something we mentioned about CMS over the summer already.
We'd like to do it at EdTech. We don't have the kitchen there. Ultimately, if we can get that, that would be a great preparation site and feeding site. But what we did last year was did the meal prep from Chaco Wendy Middle. And then they were, it carried out kind of like a satellite. And my understanding was they were going to do it. Mark it up, correct?
That was my understanding. We were going to be back at Chaco Wendy Middle again this summer.
You know, time frame, I, I think it happens right after students get out, when the summer feeding program starts.
It starts up.
There's like a two-week window there. That's, that's it.
And it runs.
If they do it at Chaco Wendy, but we've asked her and Jerry's in our office daily. Her kitchen maintenance guy that's in charge of the kitchens and he's, he's on the same boat that we're on, so.
It, it still might behoove us to have another conversation.
We can confirm and bring it back before you approve to Chaco Wendy Middle.
I think we need to have another conversation to make sure that she's aware that it's going to shut that kitchen down right away and make sure that that's not going to interrupt any kind of feeding schedule.
Why don't you do this?
We've got it. We have another meeting next week.
Doesn't matter. It's February next June.
That's what I'm saying. We have.
Let's entertain a motion, if the board wants to. Entertain a motion for S.W. Snowden. Handle them separately.
Some movement, Jeffers. That quest was Snowden.
Anybody have, do you understand what I'm saying?
Go ahead and approve Snowden and then.
I don't, I don't even want to approve the motion tonight for something that will be done in June. Until I get a better understanding of what we're doing over there in June. Because I know there's something going on at that school that we talked about. I just can't remember. I should be able to remember better than this, but I can't remember what it was. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the Snowden for fifty-five, is it? I had to go back and look up.
Correct. Fifty-five hundred, yes, sir.
Okay, I got it.
To be done over.
Over the Easter break.
The Easter break. Okay. Any other questions about that one? If not, all in favor say aye.
And we will have custodial staff there to clean up after and get the classrooms set back up that Friday, so.
Who's going to check before I leave this issue? Who's going to check on the CMS and to give me some more details on what's going to be done there? Well, I won't, I'm just going to have that tonight, but next week, let us know something about that. Let's see here. Do you have those hard copies, Lisa? Well, first off, tell me this, what is this test well at Snowden? Let's pull that up and see what that's about.
That's a proposed project from, I was hoping Ms. Tiani would stay, but she, she got out. She must have said somewhere she had to go because I talked to her in the parking lot. But it's through East Carolina School, a college and the fossil museum to have three test wells put at Snowden, out in between the playground and the cafeteria, which is.
There's a picture on here.
Yes, sir. In the whole site, yes, sir. And actually, a presentation is there. I got it this afternoon, but I just asked to get y'all for preliminary viewing if it's so. And if y'all wanted to think on it, then we'll give them gracious later. But the wells will be used for education involving math. A lot of math involved in the geological side of it. He explained that they would be able to determine the way the water flowed underground by the three triangulation of it. They would be able to control water levels. It'd be tested water for calcium and iron and a lot of other things that go on involved in water. Lot of information, lot related to the kids during the school year and a lot involved in the summer program that they're willing to come and do. And it's a no-charge, no thing. It's just asking permission to put the three wells on our property.
Says they're shallow, but how deep is that?
I don't know if it's explained. I do not. I, I read the presentation this afternoon. Have you been involved in the source of Snowden well? Yes.
That there is some interest in some form of scientific or something investigation to go along with the camp. You're welcome. And I don't know much about it, but they thought it would be.
And he's willing to come back and actually give y'all a presentation on it, but this is like the first viewing.
Not knowing much about. What's our liability here, Annie? I mean, I know what test wells are and I know they put them.
Well, they're four-inch.
No, I'm not looking at you. I'm just looking around the room in general.
They're four-inch wells. The casing that showed in one of the pictures will be up four foot, so it's out of the flood zone, so you don't get contaminated waters. We don't have to worry about those issues. They presume all liabilities, all cost of all education and everything, as explained in the video, I mean, in the presentation, so.
Why don't we let, you said he would come.
Yes, sir. He's the doctor.
Sounds like a great thing. I would just want to be assured that we, A, we don't have any liability and B, that these are as tamper-proof as possible, that sort of thing.
Correct.
I don't want to get somebody to fall down a four-inch well.
Wells make me nervous, but just looking at that picture, it doesn't look like there's anything to fall into unless you took that four-foot thing out of the ground.
Well, it'd still be a four-inch hole in the ground, so foot could get caught in it, but that would be it.
Well, that's the case on any school property.
We still want to go over some of this. Let me ask another, can I ask Ms. Oris a question? Since she's walked back in the room. Summer feeding programs, we were discussing at CMS, possibility. What do you know about that that we don't know? Because we don't know a lot about.
The kitchen, kitchen.
Kitchen, right.
For, this will probably be the tenth year that we have collaborated with Carol World, which is a nonprofit. They are a certified licensed child nutrition company provider. We have available them the use of one of our kitchens in which they've cooked meals. I think last year's about six hundred and fifty lunches a day and then maybe four or five were the breakfasts prepared. We use that kitchen to prepare the food. That site in the past has also been a place that students, children, anyone eighteen and under can eat free. The USDA reimburses for the meals. There were seventeen feeding sites throughout the county last year, which include also the schools that hosted summer eating camp. There were vacation Bible schools. We had community feeding sites and several trailer parks. Some of the churches actually collaborated and set up feeding tents and put books for children to read from Partnership for Children. It's a nationwide program.
Right, I understand the program.
So that was what we do. It's the Eastern, the Eastern kitchen, but when we had reading camp there, we moved it because there'd be too much action on that site for little children as well as people coming and going, picking up food.
So they're using CMS?
That if, we discussed where would be the site for cooking this summer again, and, uh, Ms. Gibbs agreed that she would permit the use of her kitchen. We are also waiting, hopefully, that we will receive funding from Farm to School and be able to move that kitchen to the Ed Tech if we got money to set it up again, but at present, the proposal is that we use the Chaco Wendy Middle School kitchen as our prep kitchen for the summer, like we did last year.
Do you know how soon it starts up after school's out?
The week after school is out, eating starts. So we get out on a Friday-ish and probably the next Wednesday. I think that's how we did it last year, was the following Wednesday we started.
So we obviously need some coordinating going on.
Yep.
Communication.
She, Ms. Gibbs handled it beautifully and, uh, uh, so, um, they seem comfortable with it.
Our issue, uh, Ms. Oros, is that there is a possibility that the kitchen would not be available for the first two weeks after school is out, and that's not gonna work with the problem.
Well, it just depends if, if reading camp does not start, it depends when reading camp starts. Perhaps we would have to do two weeks elsewhere. I do not know. There, you know, we might be able to identify if it should start.
Well, I wouldn't wanna move it around.
Well, at this point in time, we have time between now and then.
Let me work on coordination.
Just work on coordination. Like I said earlier, it's just February. We're talking June.
Yeah, but that, this was fortunate that Carol World was going to be filling out paperwork. DPI requests that paperwork fairly early to verify how many participants there'll be, so if there is a chance there will be a change, someone probably needs to contact them so that they don't, uh, submit paperwork that is not correct.
Before we do that, let, let me take care of the coordination. I'm hopeful that we can keep things the way they are.
Okay, um, capital updates. Lisa, just hand out the two thousand fifteen, sixteen. There's very few things on it. And you have it on your screen if you want. I mean, if you're one of those folks that you can read it right here, but you're gonna have to enlarge it if you're eyes or anything like mine. Fifteen sixteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Just an update, Stan, on this is all, but I just can't read the one on the computer. Well, I mean, I can read it by enlarging it, but it's just harder to do.
And Ms. Lisa has, yes, sir, I got the same thing, but we, I did send electronic one over with it on the extra column added with the completion date, but it didn't get in time to get posted, so.
I'm actually starting at the back and go forward. How about?
All right.
Or actually, I'll let you sit. You're one given up.
No, that's fine.
But no, I was just gonna point out a couple of things. The very, at the very back, um, anything in yellow, I'm assuming is telling me it's completed.
Correct.
But I heard someone say, and I don't even know how to actually explain it, if it says completed, it's completed, even if it's in yellow and there's not, and I'm looking over it because it was a finance thing I was told, if there's not anything written in that column that says completed, it's because what, funds haven't cleared through or, I, I don't even know exactly what the term I was trying to ask.
I'm confused, but this dude told me, "Don't want it, gonna get covered," so I'm not sure why you're looking.
Oh, I got it. Okay, I got you. Well, looking at the last page, I mean, I can just pick out one. Says Chaco Wendy Middle installs soundproofing in the van, eight thousand. We spent the money, so I'm assuming it's done.
Yes, sir, completed.
Right, I'm just saying, why they don't have complete, and somebody told me it was because something hadn't cleared through. I'm just trying to, you know, handle if they're really complete or not.
Yes, it is complete, yes, sir. They have been installed and it has helped greatly.
Right.
I, I prepared with Mr. a general ledger report that had the projects completed, so that's what I was asking her about. Anything that was completed is in the general ledger. We moved the money up to your savings for future projects. I believe that figure was two forty-five.
To the fund balance, or what?
It's actually in.
It's got a separate line item.
Separate line, okay, all right.
Of money saved from previous projects.
Uh, Stan, those last three that says bargains removed due to cutting by the commissioners or whatever, but aren't some of those, none of those are being done? I thought, when it said bargain, I thought y'all had actually replaced some of those, or is that just less than what we were originally gonna replace?
That was less than what we originally was going to replace. We're replacing them as Brian, that does all of our work, he keeps a ledger in his truck of every unit that has problems and the amount of compressors being put in them, so we started off with our worst ones. The ones that have been the sickest over the last few years. So we started at John Cotton Taylor and we put in four as of now and three.
Were there nineteen purchased, Stan?
Nineteen purchased, yes, sir. Throughout the system between, between John Cotton Taylor, Chaco Wendy Middle, Chaco Wendy Primary and Bath.
But all I was gonna say is if we want these additional ones, this is something we could look at when we start the next capital.
Most certainly, yes, sir. That's what I'm putting together for your next capital. I've taken everything that was knocked off from the years before and we're putting on your, what we'll be presenting to you for our seventeen, eighteen.
And then the, the third page, nothing needs to be discussed there because that's all completed. Um, that brings us pretty much back to the first page.
Okay.
And all I'm trying to do, I've already spoke to you once before, you know, we're trying to clear this out.
Yes, sir, we've got dates put together.
So we can get to the next. We've got another year coming up on top of us.
Line six, which is northeast.
Can you get the report that we had that specified which ones were truly closed now and then we can compare them for you?
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go down about, and the board, you can jump anywhere. Don't, I mean, I don't have to direct this. Anybody can jump in, but I'm gonna go down about seven or eight lines on page one to where it says Chaco Wendy Middle installed washable ceiling. That's what we just talked about. So for that nine thousand.
That's number eighteen, line eighteen.
Number line eighteen is the onset. I'm just putting a check off on mine. I'm trying to cover all these projects that we don't have something accomplished, and I'm just checking that off, cause I know we just said we were gonna put it out. Snowden, we just nineteen, we just approved, so that's out. Then moving back up, what, what, what's the deal on, cause in some of this I know we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
But I can't remember.
I got dates roll of them, so.
Okay, I can't remember. Wash, I'm gonna move up with seventeen. Washington High School, clean and paint is twenty thousand set aside. What is that?
That's twenty thousand that was budgeted.
Where do we stand on it?
It was budgeted, it was set up for RFP and the lowest bid we got in was forty-five thousand, and I have not been able to think of a bit lower than that, that quote.
So if we wanna talk about it, that's one we can talk about in the next.
Correct.
Cause what I'm trying, if we can get some resolution to this, we can just actually do away with this sheet altogether and quit having to talk about it.
I agree.
The next one up, I think I do know about it. That's the one where there was some discussion at Northside.
And we have just sent it back out.
About which sides we were gonna do, right?
Yes, sir, and we determined the size and it's been sent out for RFP. It went out yesterday, I think.
Got you.
Again, just second time.
We're gonna talk about Washington High School on the next meeting.
Full width of the sidewalk.
We'll talk at Washington High School.
And full length of the sidewalk.
I haven't got a Washington High.
It's twelve foot wide. It's gonna be in the concrete. We're putting the concrete, so the post won't get run over and won't get mowed over, but it'd be close within six inches of the edge of it.
Now, wait a second. How, how is the canopy gonna cover the whole sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, yes, ma'am. The canopy to full width. The post will be set inside six inches, so it will be core drilled and filled with cement back to the existing level, is the way the RFP is written.
We'll worry about that. When does that RFP, how long will it fit this out?
Um, she gave it a, it goes off next Thursday.
Okay, so we'll know.
Yeah.
Okay, what did we, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, the next, I'm moving up.
Yes, sir.
John Cotton Taylor. What did we decide on that canopy? It seemed like there was some discussion about it, too.
We've made it, the width that was requested, which was thirty foot by thirty, it's thirty foot wide and thirty-two foot outer, roughly there about measurement, somewhere in the ballpark.
Okay.
Should be a lot more than twenty-seven dollars.
Yes, sir. We're not gonna have the budgeted number, but we.
That wouldn't even cover all the posts you got.
But originally, it was just a three-foot wide down for the students to come in, and then it's got wider and wider where it covered the whole awning basically, so, so they can have a staging area to get the kids outside.
So you're trying to get a bid so that we can revisit to see if we have the funds.
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, are we actually looking to bid on that? Cause if not, that's something we can move over.
Yes, they've gone out. Ms. Lisa sent them out, yes.
Okay, well, if it doesn't work, or if it does, it doesn't matter. We can, we can talk about that. Isn't our next budget meeting on Monday?
Monday night, that's right.
Yeah, okay. So I'm gonna put down here, that might be something we want to add to Monday night.
Cause you won't give the twenty-seven.
Monday night.
No, we're close.
That's number fifteen.
Okay, we decided not to do the neck. Now, when we put down not able to do the specs, I know we talked about it.
Yeah, thirteen.
Do we just need to close that? Is that gonna be one we just close out?
That's cause it has to be so tall, right?
Right, yeah.
Wind restriction.
So I'm just gonna put, we'll, when we get back together, we'll talk about just closing that one out.
But, but I feel like when we do that, we need to report back to the commissioners, I think, because we, when we did this, we did it as an agreement that these were projects that we were gonna do, and I need to give them a reason why we've not done it.
I agree.
Either the budget was an issue or, you know, this kind of thing, so I might be able to do that.
But did we actually do that? Because we always put more, we, we put one point eight and they give us one point one, we come back in and skin it down to the projects we want to do. Do we actually report which ones we're gonna do to them and the value?
I had done a quarterly update on the projects that were on the list.
Okay, cause I, sometimes I didn't think we did on every one of them, but that's fine.
I've not been going back every month, but I like to give them an accountability of what.
I'm all about letting them know. The, jumping now the other way, I know I'm all over the place. Number twenty, line twenty, Ed Tech.
That is scheduled to be done over Easter break. The doors are ready, on site. Um, Ray Bond has them, our door guy has them all prepped and ready to go, and we have a PO set up with Mr. Steve Davis to pour the concrete, and that will be done over Easter break.
Okay. What did we decide about the Chaco Wendy parking lot? This was part, this was like part two.
It's the phase two of another one, so it's been a hole since we took the other part.
I know I brought this up before, but, uh, that's a little further down, folks. Number twenty-seven, uh, CMS, the New Access Road. I just don't believe that's gonna happen. We've been following that for about four, three or four years now.
So what'd we do with the twenty-eight thousand?
Well, we repurposed, we'll.
They used.
Well, actually, it was two or three projects there, but that was covered with, didn't we cover that already with the commissioners on? I mean, any of the money we repurposed?
I'll have to go back and look, cause we're across many different years. Part of that, I think, was used from the, something with the eastern project.
Correct. The twenty-nine thousand was taken.
But those projects were identified as on whole, so why don't we just take those up at the budget meeting and see which ones we want to move forward or which ones we don't? I mean, up to whatever y'all's discretion is. That would be twenty-six through thirty.
Twenty-six through thirty.
Mm-hmm. And we talked about.
All those, all of those repurposed money.
Yes, that's right. That was where we repurposed the money. That's right.
Supposed to be first up for this coming year, so.
So what we'll be able to do is exactly, if we decide to add them back in, we'll just add them back in. If not, they just go off of the street and we don't have to talk about them anymore, or at least that's the way I feel about it. Other than that, Stan, there's really nothing here, is there? But some of the in-house at the top?
Yes, sir. Um, we'll be through with the northeast when we started on it, got the pad poured for the box, and our plan is to be through it on two seventeen.
Okay.
Listen, the storm drain in northeast?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we dug it, dug the box and shot the grates and poured the cement for the, to hold the box, but we'll start laying the blocks tomorrow. And then we'll run the grade pipe between.
What landscaping were they gonna do at Chaco Wendy? I thought they had done that. Isn't that out front?
No, it was behind the, um, four hundred building back where the modular used to be years ago, and water was standing there. When we got the power rake before we had the excavator, Gary Buck and I went in there and graded it out and got rid of that water issue, so that one could be closed.
Close it out.
Yes, sir. It was no, it was no cost, just the cost of fuel for the tractor.
I just want ones that have done, it's the second one, it's on line seven.
Okay, so we didn't use any of the money, cause we did everything with what we had.
Correct, yes, ma'am. Number seven's in progress, and we're planning to be through it on three thirty-one, pouring the last ones at Southside.
Are you still, okay, well, number eight, are you still pouring concrete pads?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, excuse me.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you say it was supposed to be done?
We're, we will have them completed by three thirty-one.
What was it, just pads at roof drains and stuff?
Yes, sir. Well, those big corners dump so much water down, it just totally erodes. There was a rock drain system, French drain put in, but it can't handle that water when it comes off the top of that building and it's fully washed.
And just so, so you'll know, Stan has got this put together with a completed date on it. Lisa didn't get it in time to put it on here tonight. We'll have that at the meeting we have on Monday, so you'll see this list and then you'll see the anticipated date for these, including the current year that we're in.
Okay, that's fine.
And, and Stan, this, I, I don't know that this was in when you got various schools. I don't think, um, that this was included, but, uh, can you give me an update on, on, when we toured the schools last year, there was such a bad erosion problem on the multipurpose side of the campus at Eastern where the old trailers are? You know, where you've got that metal thing, yeah, going down the hill. Uh, has that been addressed in any way since last?
Well, the new building took some of the water off of it, and it will be running through the drainage down, but it's still, you know, in the area, due to the incline of the existing stuff, there's really no way to, we continue to repair it as we have a bad, bad rain, we have to go in and do some repair.
I hadn't been back to look at that since we looked.
And Russ and I were working on cleaning some of those up. We possibly may put some site down in that bottom and try to, try to.
Something, yeah.
Something to try to get to grow. Part of that soil out there is just dead dirt. It won't grow anything.
Some of those, some of those foundation supports look like they're just on a rock. I mean, it looks like, if that rock ever moved, it would start falling in.
Yeah.
Uh, I thought the drainage at Snowden.
Snowden, we will have it finished by three ten. We have everything on hand.
The front between there and the gym, was it, is that what it was?
No, we got the one at the gym corrected already. That one's been done. Um, that one was actually, a tree had grown through the end of the existing line. We were gonna put a second one in, but this town let the ditch grow up so big that the tree actually grew right up and tore our line out, so we put a new line in, and the last three rains, we monitored and have not had any problem at the front door. So the one I propose to do is to grade out from the kitchen over to that existing ditch, or excuse me, cafeteria, over to the existing drainage ditch on property, but we have all the stuff on hand to do that, and we'll have it done by three ten.
Okay. Well, and that leaves nothing but the bargains, but as far as they go, I mean, you're just putting those in as you need or you have.
I'm still, I, I have acquired a process from a, from a company to install them that does it locally.
How many do we need to install?
We still have sixteen left as of right this minute. We put two in over the last break and we put one in previously. One did it fail. We did it during the weekday.
How long does it take to put one in?
Most of a day to do one.
And how many people does it take?
Two people, minimum. And what really involves trades, electrician and the HVAC trade, so.
Right, I would think so.
And then it takes a second person with HVAC guy, HVAC guy to manhandle these things, and depending on location, some of them we can drive the tractor up to, and then some of them we have to manipulate and manhandle, so.
But you're just looking at someone to get those.
Yes, sir, a quote. Yes, sir, I'll bring that back before y'all.
Bring that back to us.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Thank you. Uh, Stan, uh, is, what, what's the holdup as far as getting those cafeteria, those doors done at the ca, at that, at cafeteria? Um, I, I see now you're saying that they will probably be done on the Easter break?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, is it the, because of lack of work or is it just priorities or, I mean?
Ma'am, we can't pour cement during the day with the kids there, it's inside.
So there haven't been any time that you could have done it prior?
Well, I've been out all the Christmas break. I was out for my personal medical stuff, so I didn't arrange anything, so I'll take the wrap for that, but we just got the doors back three weeks ago from being modified, cause we actually cut the new doors off eight inches to allow the raising of the threshold. So we can't take the doors down and leave the new doors up, and we got an eight-inch threshold where we can't put the cement back, so.
And I'm asking you this for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not asking you because.
Yes, well, we got to go in and cut the existing sidewalk ups, cause you can't terminate cement to existing cement. We have to cut a break in it, so therefore it'd be a trough that the kids could possibly fall in, and that is a door they use every day, so.
Yeah, it is.
And you, you cannot, you can't get two yards of cement on a Saturday. They even have it done on a Saturday.
I, I have a question. Um, there are so many things that you're planning to do over Easter. Do you have the manpower to do that?
No, these are being contracted. A lot of them are being contracted. The, the, um, job at Ed Tech would be involve Ray, Ray Bond putting in three hinges, four screws, basically changing out old doors and putting the new doors, once the threshold's put in, so.
So that one will take, take a day, maybe?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be done today. Yes, we'll be in and out the next day. We'll come in, take the form boards up and clean up the site, so it's basically two days, time we can get through. The catch twenty-two is whether or not we can do, whether y'all choose for us to do here or do Chaco Wendy Middle.
That's what I mean, there was just.
Chaco Wendy Middle School is kind of a, a void now, so.
I have written Easter break by a lot of things, and I, there's only so many men and.
Well, it's different trades involved, so, yes.
Is, is there, are you have to do any kind of trenching for a ditch at Ed Tech once you get that stuff poured? Is there, is there still a water standing issue out?
Well, no, sir. We'll put a pipe underneath one part of it so the water can traverse down the side of the building.
That'd be part of what you're gonna do in this project?
Yes, sir, yeah. There still probably needs to be some grading done once we get this done to see what, what we get rid of, but we have the power rake and we have the excavator now, so.
I wish we, I wish we had a Monday or Friday or something off between now and Easter to maybe do that before then, but if it just takes a day and it.
Well, it takes two days really, so. Don't we get it done and then poured back and then coming back the next day to clean up and dress up, so.
Does anybody have any other questions about this particular, I think we covered them all, but, and I know it takes a few minutes, but we need to, we need to talk about these things.
Item, item twenty-two's done. The floor tile Snowden, isn't that, is that the lawn rooms and all that?
Item twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's done.
Other than the lobby, and the, um, custodial staff's gonna do the lobby over the break, Easter break, they're gonna, the lobby. G W Walter did the main part, and it's very. Easter break, they're gonna, the lobby, GW Walter did the main part, and it's very nice and they love, they love it, it's very easy to clean, but y'all approved five hundred dollars of a hundred and fifty, but they're planning to do it, they're gonna clean it and roll it out while the kids are gone.
Okay. Any more questions about that one? Okay, the, uh.
Twenty-sixteen seventeen.
The sixteen-seventeen, I have some safety and, uh, secure, some security issues, so we're gonna carry that to closed session. Can I get a?
Oh, you ready for me, I didn't know if you wanted to address the other things?
Well, just a second, I may, I might have one last question on here.
Can, can we see this again with the numbers total at the bottom, so we can see where we're at with the, in the balance? Looking at it, looking at all, everything that's highlighted in yellow, there's.
Mac took that and cleaned it up and Mac has a version that we have to then get to the board office, but he has a clean version. Other than all the money.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do that.
Looking at what's highlighted, we should be probably two, two fifty to the good.
Two forty-six.
Two forty-six.
Good guess, good guess.
And we have that one issue with the security of that's a thirty-three thousand PO that we need to see if we.
Russ has explanations for that.
Okay, okay, just hang on then, uh, we're, we're gonna back up, cause I was almost to forget Mark here and he would not appreciate that.
Please don't forget my green.
So, before we go into closed session, uh, grants.
Yes, sir, uh, we're entering a partnership with Saint John of Christ in Washington, North Carolina, it's, we've applied, it's Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center After-School Program that would work with students at Southside, Washington High School and Beaufort County EdTech, all three locations will be able to provide tutoring, credit recovery, guidance services, enrichment activities, um, the program's budgeted around four hundred thousand per year, a total of one point two million over three-year grant period, so, with any luck, we will get this and be able to implement those programs.
I have nothing at Northside.
I couldn't tell you, this is a joint effort with Michelle Oros and the, uh, the church and I'm not, I don't know if it's a transportation issue or what the.
Did you find out for us?
I'll be glad.
Let us know Monday.
Cause that's a pretty glaring outage right there, isn't it, Barbara?
And I know we need it. Saint John of Christ in Washington, you're saying?
That's what I'm reading, yes, ma'am.
That, that was the issue, was the transportation, the distance to, from the church to the camp, that, that, we won't look at something else that would be closer to Northside.
I think it, that's all I remember was the transportation issue.
Cause that's always a problem.
And when we have, I mean, when we have grants like this, this is a kind of much larger unusual when it's some of the grants that come through.
Correct.
But that actually requires us to hire people.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
What happens to those people when the grant money runs out? Sometime, in the past, there's been grants that were short-term grants that we would hire someone possibly, and when the grant expires, we continue to have to continue to keep the person.
Well, all of these folks would be part-time, after-school type jobs, so these would not be permanent positions, so, the, you would, the vast majority of the time we have things like this, our own employees take those positions for extra employment.
So, it would be current folks already.
There's no full-time person new added to this.
Anybody else would, the, the positions would disappear once the grant was exacted.
Yeah, but if anybody outside could apply, of course, but they would have to, with the understanding that it's part-time and has a temporary end to it.
Okay, alright, moving on, now I'll entertain that motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-dot-eleven, A-one, to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one-one-five-C-dash-three-twenty-one, and to formulate and/or adopt school safety components of the school improvement plans.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in second, go into closed session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session. Good, okay, we're back in open session, and the first item up is to approve personnel agenda that was just discussed.
Some movement, sir, Chair.
Second.
I got a motion in the second, any further discussion? Not out here, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved, calendar.
So, we got the tonight's meeting noted there, we have a meeting, it's a, um, budget session for capital on the thirteenth, next week at five-thirty, and then our regular February board meeting on the twenty-first, I'd like to ask, could we add, go ahead and add a local current expense budget planning meeting either the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, like at five-thirty?
Of what?
Of February.
Twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth?
Monday or Tuesday. Right now, I mean, there's no.
Do we have, we have to have it in February?
I'd like to get it done, if we could, to go ahead, we, we won't accomplish, we won't, we won't complete anything, but we try to get as much information with the Title One conversation and, and any of that stuff, just to go ahead and start that conversation.
Is one of those days better than the other?
Twenty-seventh, is that Monday?
Be it Monday or Tuesday.
I need twenty-four, I need to get back to March first, so. It's good in Monday.
It could be anytime that week, I mean, if you wanted to do it on a Thursday, to[1431.12]